Good evening, I'd like to call the June 5th, 2023 meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectment to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being held live in the Townhouse Auditorium and also being broadcast over Zoom. We are recording the meeting. Is anybody else recording it? Thank you, Kristen. Hampton Times, Hampton Wolverhamm Times is recording it. First thing on the agenda, we have minutes to approve of May 1st and May 9th, both regular meetings. All those in favor? And we have the minutes of May 9th as well. Pretty short meeting. Again, we were reviewing the previous town meeting and then talking about upcoming office reorganization.
Remove approval?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you both. We pretty well caught up, Ham. We're just, pretty much just May, right, at this point? Okay, super. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have an appointment to the Council on Aging. How are you?
Hey.
Hi.
Deb. Why don't you turn your, turn your mic on first, please?
There's your button, and put the thing towards you because it's not that sensitive.
I'd like to introduce you to Winita Markham.
For the purpose, I know you because you're on, I'm on the board with you, but for the purpose of everybody, hi, you are?
I'm Deb Verhony.
Hello, Deb. From the Council on Aging Board, basically. And the Board has been looking for members to fill a couple of spots, one under 60, one over 60, I believe, right?
Yes.
And so they got a response. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, just give us a little bit, what's your interest and what do you see some of the needs?
Honestly, it's really, for me, is finding a way that I can support what the Board is doing and supporting the community, especially our seniors and what they do in Hampton. Me trying to find my place within the community, I thought what better place to start with our elders. And they can help guide me as I enter the next transitions into my life. It's usually how it was in my community. I'm a long way from my community, so it's an honor.
Thank you for stepping up. And Deb, I believe the Board was the unanimous recommendation for this.
The Board was the unanimous recommendation. We feel that she was offered quite a bit to the Board.
Right.
She is our under 60, which we did need, but also.
Do you have to rub that in?
Not in the under 60 category, so I can't.
I don't know if I could ask you how many you have at this point, I mean, under 60s, that's a smaller percentage of the Board.
It's a very small percentage. I'm not sure that we have, if we have any two.
Yeah, I remember we had Tina before, but she had to step down because she was hired.
Right. But no, she interviewed very well, and she's eager to get started.
Winita, have you attended any of the meetings yet?
No.
Just to sit in? Just to met with the Board?
Now, the meetings are available on Zoom as well, which is typically how I attend.
Winita, on the base date, you're volunteer base date, and what's NHFA?
NHFA. It's the National Home Funeral Association, and I also volunteer for NIDA, which is the National End of Life Doula Association Alliance.
It's like a hospice situation?
They help all sorts of people at the end of life, regardless of age, is what NIDA does. Just really educating people about their death options.
Great, well, I think we've grilled her enough. We have a motion from the Board. And, Ham, do you have a sense of the appointment schedule, or is that something you and Bob can work out?
Just a couple, just a couple of members who Becky is checking to see if they want to continue for another three years, but otherwise, you know, they've got.
But I mean, the open under 60 would be for a term of, are we just going to go ahead and say three years right now?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know, but I will check.
Right, yeah, three years and three years for each one.
Right, but I didn't know if we, I mean, they're already typically allocated for different years, and I don't know if there was supposed to complete the three-year one, which would expire in 2024, whichever. Like I said, we can just go ahead and just throw it out for three years right now.
Yeah, retroactive, or, you know, today.
Just throw it out for three, starting July 1st, basically, which will be the next meeting.
I'll move, we appoint Winita Markham to the Council on Aging for a term of three years, effective as soon as she gets signed in, or July 1st?
Well, there's no more meeting this month.
Oh, July 1st, yeah.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
You need a vote, yes, but you are in favor of it.
I am, absolutely.
In unanimous vote, congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You do have to stop and see Eva sometime to get sworn in.
Okay, perfect, I absolutely love it.
She was down there, kind of hiding, so you might be able to catch her.
Deb, great job.
Thank you.
Deb, do you still have another opening, though?
Oh, we do have other openings.
Yeah.
One over 60, yeah. I will say, Don, I was on the Council on Aging Board, and when I was elected to the Select Board, I had to leave, so you can't be on the Board.
Dan?
Uh, next, we have a posted dog hearing for a situation on Raymond Drive concerning the Williams family, and we have in attendance Shelley, the family, an affected party. That's pretty much it. We'll invite the Williams up first, as well as Shelley to give us a recap. All right. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our senior member, and when I say senior, Don, I don't mean in a sense of like you're old and decrepit. Nobody said that out loud. So, ask me if you would introduce her up.
I do, okay. First, first of all, because it's a hearing, we have to swear everybody in, so just everyone at the same time, okay? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give at this hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, under the pains and pangs of your perjury?
I do.
All right. So, where are we, Shelley? Want to give us a recap?
Well, the last hearing was November, November 2022, and the dogs have just been out several times since. Dispatch actually printed me out what they've been notified from January till now, and it's been about eight or nine times, but then it's also usually on Facebook, or people text me or call me that they're out, and I immediately call one of these guys, and they, they're usually right on them, trying to find them. But then a couple of weeks ago, they got out onto Weir Road and they killed a couple chickens. And then on Tuesday, they got out, and both were hit by cars and caused an accident.
Did the person who owned the chickens file a complaint?
She called the Dispatch, and I called her. She wasn't happy.
Yeah.
They'd been at her house the week before, too.
And this is different behavior from, from them. I mean, I know in the past when we talked about them, they were just kind of running, running free and not causing, not attacking anybody or any other animal that I know of.
No.
Well, I mean, can we have clarification of how the chickens died? Because they didn't, like, go after the chickens. From my understanding, when they ran over where the coop was at, the two baby chicks got scared and flew out of the coop. So, but I don't believe the dogs actually, like, went after them and bit them.
Well, I think they did. I think that's how they killed them.
I wasn't there, so I don't know. I'm not defending it either way.
And then, then on Tuesday of last week, they were out and there was an automobile accident, right?
Yes.
Both dogs got hit?
Well, first, one got hit, and then Dana Pixley pulled over to help Jim Gillen, and as he pulled over, a dog ran on Raymond, and he hit her, and then he ran her over. And she was flopping in the road. He couldn't believe it. She got up and ran back down Raymond.
And how are the, where are the dogs now?
They're both home, recovering. They do, I have to say, have PTSD where they're actually scared of cars now. I mean, I know it's not a great thing, but hopefully they'll hope for it. They're, they're, one of them, she, she's really, really bad.
I, so the last, last time we met, I think it was in November, December of 2022, and, and I just have to say that at that time, I believe I said this was my concern, that either the dogs would get hit, or there would be an accident involving a, you know, a person in town. And you were supposed to do certain things. Did that, those things take place?
They did. They put up the fence. They fixed that part of the fence.
Okay. And so how are they getting out? What's the deal?
Digging.
Dig under the fence.
Right, under the fence.
One time, they actually went right through our screen in the living room.
Yeah, they, she jumped through the window.
And I think.
And another time, she broke the chain.
Yeah.
And I had, that was, I think, the time before she got hit, and she ran on, what was that, Country Road or something, I think? She had the chain still on her, and she got tangled up in a person's woods there.
Is this a chain from a run, or is it?
Yeah. Run the runner.
Okay, and I think Selectmen Rivers had talked about that at that time.
Yeah, we've got the minutes right now. We suggested a heavy-duty chain, heavier. And we also noted about the safety of the.
She broke the chain, and the neighbor, I think his, I believe his name was Kyle, because we asked if it's okay if we go back there, you know, to look in his backyard, and to think that we're back there doing anything. And he says, sure. He said, do you mind if we, if he helps him? We said, sure. We went back there, after a few minutes, she was barking, and we got her, we untangled her.
And there, there, there's a Wi, you have a Wi-Fi thing to find them?
Yeah, Wi-Fi, yeah.
So what are we going to do with these guys? I mean, we gotta.
I'm hoping it's a wake-up call for my daughter, because I need to know how important it is that she needs to be out there with them. There's no excuse, no excuse. I'm not going to say how did it be. We are doing what we can, my husband and I. I mean, in the contact, Shelley, whenever we, you know, we have a question or something, we do try to do the best that we can. One thing, one of the dogs no longer lives with us. He went to live with my son. My son bought a house, so he took his dog. So that eliminates one. He was one with the mom, Lena. Those two would be, the two would be our kids. One of them is born. So now we just have to deal with the other one to stop getting out. But now, I really believe she has PTSD, where she's really frightened.
How many do you have, one or two?
No, we had four.
Four dogs.
And now we have three.
We had ten puppies, so we had 12 dogs.
Two of them never, ever go anywhere.
Right.
It was always the dad and the mom.
Just for clarification, they're all Huskies?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, the dad and the mom would be the ones that would always go. The dad is now no longer in Hampton. He's in Enfield, so we don't have to worry about him. He's not coming back.
Enfield's not that far away.
I know, trust, I know, but one thing I can say about my son, he is responsible with his dog now, and, you know, he takes care of it. That dog's not coming back. Lena, the other one, the one who went through the screen, the one who broke through the train, the one who digs under the fence.
And her kids follow her. That's what that is.
She, I believe, she's, she's really frightened of any sound, any scare, any car, if a horn beat, she's like really jumping. She's really frightened right now. I think it was a wake-up call, like I said, for my daughter. She's really the owner of Lena, and it was a wake-up call where she almost lost her. And because she almost lost her, you know, now she's stepping up and doing what she needs to do, which we've been trying to get her to do this for a while, since we had the dogs. So, we're just as frustrated and fed up.
But we asked before about the dogs being put on a chain or run, with a collar. So, they shouldn't have been able to dig under a fence if they're on a chain or a collar.
Right, but she broke the chain.
But once.
Yeah.
But several times, she's been digging under the fence.
Well, yes, what she do it twice, and then the time she jumped through the window in the house.
Which obviously you're not chaining her in the house, obviously, right, yeah.
Do you have training collars, by any chance?
We had those, do we still have one?
We still have them. We tried putting it on, and we even, like, zapped them. It doesn't work. They don't.
The, the training collars work with the appropriate training through a handler, and they, they teach you how to operate the training collars, work with the dog, so the dog works with you. They aren't only as good as the training that comes with them, with the owner and the dog itself. You know, you put a shock collar on a dog that has never used it before, they're going to try to get away from it, and then they're going to try to run. So you have to work with them and get them to repetitive behaviors. I think that may have gotten overlooked in some of the, the training processes, to get the dog to listen and obey. You know, the obedience portion of it doesn't seem to be there. So I think that's what we are concerned about. The breaking of the chain, you know, that's a whole nother thing of the obedience, but, you know, is it an adequately sized chain for a dog of that size and nature and breed? You know, the digging on the fence, however you guys try to handle that, seems, seems like a pretty big issue, but Shelley had said, eight times, said the police have gotten calls that we weren't notified, but it was still reported to somebody that they were loose. Hopefully, it's a wake-up call for your daughter, who's listed as a technical owner. I think last time we talked, and there was a little bit of finger pointing about who's responsible, who's supposed to get the dog, you know, who's the one actually caring for the animal. So I just want to make sure that we're, try to get all that covered, you know?
And our daughter Angelina is the owner of Lena, and our son is the owner of Luca. That's what we were saying previously.
And your son is now the one in Enfield?
Enfield, the one that moved out.
Just to be clear, these were not our dogs. We never wanted a dog. Our dog was a little rat terrier. She passed away. So, this is just something that we unfortunately inherited.
Right.
And we're doing the best we can. We both work full-time jobs, like, we're trying to do the best we can.
Probably that's the case. I mean, we had scheduled a hearing. Chickens are one thing. We typically take an action after that. We have, a person in town has suffered pretty severe damage because of these dogs. And another, that you talk about PTSD, somebody runs over a dog, could be more days after that, too. So, there have been actions now that have consequences, and I think unfortunately, we're at a point where we can't keep kicking it down the road. We need something concrete that's going to take care of it and not keep coming back and not report.
Well, that's how they get out. It's not like we're making it up.
No, I understand that, but we don't hear that. I mean, we have lots of dogs around. Nobody else is going out the window, you know? You have the road behind us, and obviously, he had no intention of hitting a dog when he went out that morning, so it's, you know.
Well, yeah, of course.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was driving my car just down Allen Street, and.
This is Jim Gillum. He was driving along the car.
Yeah, I was driving down Allen Street, and out of nowhere, the dog was there. I, I didn't even see it approach me. I didn't see it come across the road. All of a sudden, it hit the car, and it hit the car. I didn't hit the, it hit. So, anyway, then I looked across the road, and on the other side was a dog, and it was injured. I could tell. It was down on the ground, and then it got up and walked away. It turns out, from what I understand, the driver of the, the truck that was coming in the other direction apparently hit that dog, and I had hit the first dog. I didn't know what happened to the first one. It was gone. But, a couple of things I wanted to talk about. One is that I got the insurance estimate on my car today. It was heavily damaged. It's going to cost $3,100 plus to get repaired. That means I'm going to be out of pocket for $300. This is a deductible on that. I don't feel like I should have to pay that. So, I was looking for some sort of help with that tonight, from you. And the second thing is, I don't, my feeling is, after listening to what Shelley had to say, and what you guys have been talking about tonight here at this meeting, is that, that clearly not enough has been done to control these dogs and contain these dogs. You know, the fact that they got into the chickens last week, and now the accident on Thursday, this has been going on for a long time, and I feel like the Board has been remiss in not getting something done definitively to protect the public. I mean, I was driving that car. I wasn't injured. The airbags didn't go off, but at the same time, you know, I could have swerved and hit somebody on the side of the road. I could have hit the truck head-on. Anything could have happened. I mean, it could have been much, much worse than what it was. And anyway, that's, I just wanted to get that, that across, that I feel like a lot more should have been done, could have been done, and hasn't been done. And whatever the reasons are for the dogs getting out, as far as I'm concerned, doesn't hold water. These dogs, I don't know what the answer is exactly, but to me, it seems like these dogs should be, you know, probably removed from the town. I don't know what the answer is. That surprises me that they're alive today, to be honest. I thought one of them at least was dead, the one that I hit, so.
Well, you said she hit you.
Yeah, she did. She ran out and hit my car.
You guys say you hit her, but that's, you know, but my question is, our dog, which one? Did you hit the big one or the small one?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
The dog, Lena, she's super skinny, and she can't weigh any more than 40 pounds, maybe 50, soaking wet.
Do you want to see a picture of the car? Because I can show it to you.
Yeah.
We're a little off track. Jim, your points are well taken.
Yeah.
And we want to be responsive for that, so thank you. You know, I'm not sure that we can order the rest of it there. You know, you talked about the $300 out of pocket, but I think.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Another point here, I think, before this been, sort of, low, and I don't know who, low complaint action without, without, but the obvious, as you said, maybe this has gone on too long. And, yeah, give it tons of opportunity, and you try to be responsive, to fix the fence, and guide the fence.
It just don't work.
Like you said, it hasn't really been here helping. You've got to settle.
With this. So you're feeling just as bad about it as we are. You know, you didn't go out and get two Huskies to raise for your own, and you're bearing the brunt of it, kind of hard on you guys as well. But we need a solution that's going to protect the town. We talked about in prior meetings, and I think Craig made the point, because he sees the scanner, another week, there's another report, they're in Isla Meadow, they're in Wolverhamm. And to be honest, we're very fortunate, as Jim said, no driver got hurt. It could have been. He could have swerved, could have been a school bus there. We saw the picture of the school bus in the telephone pole two months ago.
Could have been a very different outcome.
Could have been a very different outcome, you know? Jim's looking good and in fair health, but I can't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. I, I wasn't injured. I felt like I was lucky. I wasn't injured, but I wasn't, so that's good.
But, you know, he doesn't want to be out of pocket either. So, it's a bit of a wake-up call, that, you know, as Shelley has talked about, she's gone, I think, over and aboard, you know, trying to come up with a solution that helps everybody. But I think we're at the point where we need to partner with you and do something that protects the town. And that's my feeling where we are.
And your animals.
And your animals. Look, they got severely hurt. You know, say what you will. We talked before about they might make a car swerve. These Huskies, which are beautiful animals, got severely hurt. Like you worried about, you know, they're at a point where maybe they're fragile. Shelley, I'm sure has seen that before, that after a traumatic thing, the animals changed also. So I'm looking for, Craig, your thoughts?
I think we've covered them all. I mean, we can't kick the can down the road anymore, you know? We have actions that have happened that, you know, there's consequences now.
I don't see, you know, you've done good work on trying to take care of the fence and do something, and short of, like, going for a new fence that buried down three feet in the ground. I don't know how you can make that secure against the dog digging out again. And gosh, they can certainly go through. In the summertime, there's going to be a window open. And if they have the need to flee, that's something that's built in.
Just for record, I, I made note back in December that I was concerned about the safety of the street, cars swerving, maybe hitting somebody. We're fortunate, you know, the outcome of this is just a damaged car and the injured dogs, you know, because that's really sad that they, they got hurt. But the outcome could have been much worse. There could have been a child on a bike. There could have been an accident involving a school bus at the time of day, time of afternoon, a pedestrian riding a bike, you know, could have swerved and hit the person, you know? There could have been a far different outcome. And that scares me, that if we let that go on, that there's another possibility that it could happen again, based on past occurrences.
Did you, did you, the, the, on the run, are they on the run all the time when they're out in your yard?
For the most, not all the time.
My daughter should go out there and sit on the deck and watch.
And the way our house is set up, it's like, in the backyard, it's like a U shape, so sometimes, you know, we see.
Yeah.
One thing that I was thinking about doing was getting the invisible fence, so that way there is a perimeter where it's just right there. I mean, I'm trying, I know you guys want the dogs removed from the town. I know you do. I.
Could the invisible fence be inside, inside your fence?
Yeah, because the backyard is really big.
Yeah, so that would keep them from digging under the fence.
That's what I was thinking.
You know?
Can I just backtrack and ask a question? How come your son decided to take the other dog? You said it was his dog?
Yeah, because he just bought a house.
Okay, so he took the dog after he had moved?
Yeah.
I got you, okay. I missed that, I'm sorry.
And the two that are there, three there, are there now, or two?
There's three there, but it's only one of the three that is, oh, it's Lena, the, the mother.
And who is the owner of the three dogs?
Our dog, oh, well, our daughter's the owner of Lena and Aries, and our other daughter is the owner of Ari. So there's two puppies, a girl and a boy, the mom.
And both daughters live with you?
Yeah. But my, one of the daughters is looking for a house right now, where she's going to then take Ari with her.
We don't have a lot of options, you know, that's the thing. We, we look for help with control, then we can order our town, and then the easier option to do is having the dogs neutralized, which, in my experience, I've never seen happen. I've, one time it was ordered, and the owner of the dog took it upon himself and carried it out. And that in my time in 20-something years, the only thing, only time I can remember. You? Any other time?
No.
No, that was a, just the.
I'll sell my house before I do that.
Right, exactly. And like I'm saying, we're sympathetic to that. We have never ordered that. Man, so, but.
No, the poor dogs don't deserve that.
No, and they don't. But also, they don't, the people in town don't deserve.
No, I know.
So we're looking for some solution.
Well, we could order, we could order remedial action to be the installation of the invisible fence.
Which would have to go around the front, because you're protecting the front windows as well, you know? Which is typical. I had it at home, and it pretty much circles the house, you know?
And you've agreed to reimburse Mr. Gillen first?
Yeah, that's not a question, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Now, is this something you think you're able to get done in a timely manner?
I would say by the end of the week. We just have to.
I think that would probably be, you know, you'd have to schedule and stuff.
Be pretty fast.
Yeah, it'd be pretty fast. I mean, I think the Board is willing to say end of the month would be more. You'd have to hire a firm and stuff like that and get it done, but.
Oh, for the.
Invisible fence.
Invisible fence.
Oh, yeah. No, that's plenty of time then.
Like, I call a contractor now. I'm looking to get him back in two weeks.
That's because you don't pay him.
Hey, hey, hey.
I also think there should be, maybe we should talk about a little bit of training and handling with a dog of that energy level, you know?
So I did go to training back in, I started in January.
Yeah, you said you were going to, yeah.
Yeah, and I did. So, and it was just the basic. It was the beginner. Like, they know now to sit and to.
That's it.
Yeah, because it's really, and how to walk, like when we're walking with a leash, you know, really basic stuff.
I was also talking about the training collars, you know, whether it be a shock collar or a special harness collar. There's some type of skill that goes along with those, too. I mean, I had a high-energy dog, a hound pointer mix, and she needed a full-body harness to keep her in check. We also had to use a leader on her, which controls the angle of the nose. Where the nose goes, the dog goes. So those are things that we, I had to institute in my dog, make sure my dog was, well, first, well behaved on walks and through the public places, but second, containment.
Where do we, like, who does that? Do we hire a trainer? Like?
You'd have to hire a trainer. Browns could probably point you in the right direction. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of dog handlers, dog trainers. I, there's a couple in Isla Medo I've known of. I don't want to mention any names, just so it doesn't look like we're mentioning people. But, yeah, there's, there's companies around locally that do that type of training, and they'll come work with you in your residence to make sure it's adequate to the dog, to the handlers, and, you know, the safety and security of everybody around.
I'm loath to say this is your last, last warning. We've seen damage. We have a report of damage to neighbors' livestock, damage to neighbors' in the car, which is something, as Craig said, we were concerned about back at the beginning.
I'm worried the next time it's not going to be just the car.
Right. So, we're willing to, I think, meet you more than halfway. You have a chance to take care of it by putting in the invisible fence with the collar. But I can't speak for the board, but I think if it comes back here and they're out because, oh, I gotta put the collar on because the collar was too tight, and not going to have a lot of choices at that point, you know? We're looking, it has to be a cooperative thing here to take care of this problem.
Shelley?
Well, that's the only problem with the electric fence, is you have to make sure they go outside with the collar. And if you leave it on twenty-four-seven, it's got prongs that could really hurt them. So you have to take it off and give them a break when they're in the house with it. And then the fences, sometimes they break underground. They forget to turn them on if they're off. So you have to be so careful. But I would also recommend that Lena be on a good tether every time she's out, because I'm afraid that she'll outsmart the electric fence, you know, because she's just so smart.
That's a good point. You're saying she's the instigator, I think.
Yeah.
The other two will stay there, but she's there, they'll stay, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What's a tether?
A tether, like a chain or something, you know? And you could even, they have like fifty-foot, like, leashes. You could hook her on, and so she could run around the yard. Someone just have to stand there and hold it. I just don't trust her.
I don't either.
That somehow she'll go over that fence. Because remember, there was a chair there, and she jumped over the.
That was in the wood, though, it was still there.
Yeah.
But still.
You've gotten the fence into pretty good shape now, you think?
Oh, yeah.
It's a brand new fence.
Yeah, the fence is beautiful, but they just.
Maybe like a line of rocks at the bottom. Don't think about.
That's what I said. That's what I said. We got those, like, the bags of rocks from Lowe's, and that's what I put on the side where they got it last night. They cannot move that.
What is the chain attached to?
It has two trees, but then that, another.
You probably didn't notice it when you was at the house, because you probably just focused on going to see the fence there. But yeah, it's right there at the top, hooked there, two different trees.
Are you using just a general hardware chain or are you using a dog-specific chain? I mean, do you know the, you know the gauge of it, the size of it, by any chance?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. Just a thick chain.
They're, they're weight-rated. Like, when I had my dog, you know, a fifty-pound, you know, run was not sufficient. It had to be over a hundred-pound run.
Eighty, eighty or something like that. I don't know.
And then you get the diameter of the chain, if you're using straight chain, you know, are the links welded? Or are they pressed? If they're pressed, they're going to pull?
Right there.
They have to be welded?
Yeah, they're like steel. It was kind of thick chain. That's why I was surprised. Because I went out there and I was puzzled. I was like, how the heck did she rip this?
Other thing that I was considering is getting our whole backyard just paved in concrete. I was, I was going to have someone come out and give us an estimate. That way she can do.
You don't want to pay backyard money.
Up a line of fence is a smart move. You know, it's like I say, even a line of, like, heavy stone.
To watch that. But I suggest that, but my wife didn't want to do that, but.
Personally, I think training would go a long way with the electric fence, you know, and the collar. Just the beeps alone, once a dog's trained on it, they know, you know, risk versus reward at that point.
But, yeah, I get that. But like Shelley, I say, because you do have to take off, because I do remember that in the direction, like, and I'm just being hypothetically speaking, I mean, the chains, or excuse me, the collar's not on her, and then she darts through the door, like somebody comes in and.
I think that's the responsibility of the owner and who's in the house, you know? You have to be aware of the dog, be aware who's coming over, you know, be aware of where the dog is when people are there in the doors, you know? It's responsibility of ordering a dog.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. It, that would happen with that, just the fence, I'm sure. I could see that happening, running out like that.
I will say, I had an electric fence with the dog, and I left the collar on while the dog was in the house, just for that thing. It went out the door. It's like, oh, it's outside without the collar. And the electric fence in Spud Yard would stop it. So I think it, as I said, it can be a little onerous, but the dog will get used to it. And just by the trains itself. Sounds like a smart dog, it's going to get trained. So, I'm looking for some guidance from the board here.
Well, I, I think we'll, well, I think we need to order that the electric fence put in. And.
Handler training with the fence, too.
And Shelley, give some list of handler training.
Sure.
That they could participate in.
We need some proof of completion.
And then prove a complaint, and then you're going to reimburse Mr. Gillon. You can work that out with him.
Are we asking for reimbursement for the chickens? I'm not sure if they're asking for any.
She didn't say anything about that. She didn't say anything about that. But, I mean, you could offer.
That'd be nice, I guess. I'm not sure what chickens go for. I mean, three ninety-nine pound at Village.
Yeah, my daughter did offer, and they said no.
Okay. Jim, how do you feel?
Making progress. It's good. I appreciate the offer of the money. I think that goes a long way.
Okay, so you have your motion, Greg?
Whatever we just said.
He moved it. You're seconding it?
No, second, you're meaning motion, yes, second.
Shelley, you good with that?
Yeah.
Great. And your guys?
Uh, end of the month.
You're good with it?
I'm fine with it, yeah.
Super, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. And I just want to comment again. Thank you, everyone, for being civil. Sometimes these things can be getting out of hand, and I appreciate everyone's, you know, understanding.
Okay. Shelley, thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
We'll see you next week. Keep your space for.
All right.
Hey, Mark.
What do you got?
Got water. Deep subject, deep subject, water. Ask Mark to stop in and give us an update on bridges. And I believe we have, we have the map of the town showing bridge locations we can throw up.
Mark, before that gets pulled up, I just want to say thank you for taking care of the sign there on Summers Road.
Oh, sure, no worries.
By the crosswalk.
Oh, you know.
Letting me know. There's the two signs. The new crosswalk on Summers had the crosswalk sign, but right behind that was the elderly crossing sign. You couldn't see it.
Oh, gosh.
So we just consolidated polls.
The mirror on, on, you know?
Yes. I am aware that, yeah. I'm going to have to order a different style or something for that.
Why is it getting broken? Do you think someone's breaking it?
Second round.
You know, kids or something?
I don't know. Um.
I just noticed.
I don't think the wind would do it, so I'm not sure if a truck hit it or something.
When I came home, I said, oh, jeez, it's broken again.
Yeah, basically. So, Mark, just give us, mother, searching. No, don't worry about it. So, Mark, you've got a couple of projects going on for bridge replacement at this point. We have Rockadundy, we have the South Road Bridge, and potentially the Main Street, Laffenberg Bridge, if you will, East Main Street. Give us a recap of where those three projects stand.
Sure. Currently, the South Road, South Road Bridge over Ballard Brook, that was accepted, that was approved for a small bridge grant through the Small Bridge Grant Program, Mass DOT Bridge Division. So, we were awarded, you know, the first stage, which is inspection, surveys, design and engineering. Next phase is construction, bid and in construction. So currently, VHB, which was the engineering and consulting firm that we were assigned, they've been out on site. I've, I've met them out on site twice. They've been out on their own to have some surveying done, some wetlands flagged, so on and so forth. It's all part of the process. And then they are, once all of that information is gathered, they'll be putting together a design that will be presented to the Board of Selectmen, and also, and, you know, at which point we'll see if, that's what we're going to go forward with. They were, I will say, they, they were pleasantly surprised. I met a representative from the state and a representative from VHB. They were pleasantly surprised about the location and how easily accessible everything looks like it's going to be, and said that this, this project will be pretty straightforward. It might not end up being a, a full replacement, but certainly a, a repair or rehab to, you know, serve that road for many years to come.
Yeah, a couple of questions. So it would be at this point, you're thinking no cost to the town through the grant process?
I'm not entirely sure how that works with the, I mean, usually there's, there's a, there is a small.
It'd be a small match.
Yeah, yeah.
Small, like, of the order of the percentage, like, the fat truck match, which was, gosh, less than ten percent.
Yeah.
Be a pretty good deal.
Right.
Obviously, the road, or the replacement part would shut down part of the road. And I do know that the road going through Summers, but that's a, they.
It is. It is. And that, and that was brought up, that was actually one of the first concerns about detour or go-around traffic. And it's just, it's just really not an option. So they're, they're taking that into consideration as they're putting together their plans to do these repairs. And I think they were pretty confident that they could do one lane at a time. And I don't want to speak out of term, but I seem to remember that, that they were, there was a way that they could plan it where they could at least keep one lane open. And I can confirm that for sure. But it was a.
They have a discernment repair or replacement?
They haven't.
I thought.
It's leaning towards repair.
Yeah, because.
Yep. Just based on the conversation, on the context. So, yeah.
Well, saving money, that's great. Just like with all the state, I mean, that's what we're come to expect.
Well, what happens, too, is the second round, when the money is awarded for the second round of the grant, it's only up to a certain amount. You know, anything over that, then the town, you know, the town would be responsible to, to pay for. So, if we can get a, you know, yeah, an excellent repair or rehab, keep it within that, that threshold, I think it'd be a real, you know, a really good deal for the town.
Rockadundy.
Rockadundy. Based on conversations and meeting with state official, not officials, but from the Mass DOT Bridge Division, you know, I've gotten the impression that, that this is going to be a state-funded project with no cost to the town. But I, I just, I, I find that hard to believe. I mean, I, I feel like there's going to be, and I'm, and I'm not getting very much information from them. We, we had that meeting last year, I think it was my, John, Bob and myself, with all the engineers and state, state people, DOT Bridge Division people. And we didn't, we didn't get much answers. And, and I.
And they didn't even know repair or replacement. They were asking about the interest, too.
That's correct.
They brought this up.
That's, they came to, they came to the town saying that they wanted to work on that bridge. And, which was surprising because, you know, the structure itself, the, it's a double box culvert. The structures themselves, the two box culverts, they're four-sided box culverts, are in excellent condition. I, we were under that bridge literally a month before I got the letter from the state. And what's happening is there's some scouring on the out, on the outflow side of one of the culverts.
So backfilling.
And.
So backfilling.
From what I understand and talking to some site crews that have been out there, survey crews, they said this is a, you know, an easy fix.
Right.
And take that money, and it will last another fifty years. And, you know, maybe, so have it repaired, maybe takes, you know, take some time and do some work on the, on the wing walls and, and kind of, you know, work on the, maybe the rail, the rail bases. And, but, but to, you know, work on that bridge would, would probably close down Rockadundy. Or, or they would have to, they would have to put a temporary bridge up on, on somebody's property, and then town would be responsible for securing that easement. And so I've reached out to them twice in the last half a year, as recent as the end of March, just kind of asking some of these questions. I mean, have we decided? Have you decided if this is going to be a repair or replacement? I haven't got, I, I've also asked, requested to have another, you know, virtual meeting so that we can all get together and kind of figure out what's, what's going on here. Because they wanted to bid this project in 2023 and have it ready for construction in 2024. But I'm, we're not, I'm not getting any, any emails back, any calls back. I'm going to try again. I'll follow up with them. But I, the one thing I did get back from them, that they were working on the survey and control points, which I did, I did observe, survey crews out there. We are still currently early in our design process, pre-twenty-five percent. And our next submission will be ten percent conceptual design, followed by over the, an over-the-shoulder meeting. If everything looks good after that, we'll move on to our twenty-five percent design state. I mean, this was the end of March. I don't see.
Come down to, oh, we're going to design. We haven't determined what you're doing.
Correct.
Don't have a plan yet. Take, do the repair, take the extra money, and give it to us for the Main Street Bridge. Tell us about the Main Street Bridge.
You know, the.
That's something you and Bob.
The Main Street Bridge, I, I, I don't have a lot of current information as far as what we're doing with the MVP, the second round of the MVP grant.
The grant went in. The grant proposal went in according to what the consultant estimated the cost.
I want to be clear, before we go further, none of the bridges that we're talking about are illegal.
No.
Correct.
These are all, either from the state, this is preventative maintenance, but we have no bridges that are even close to anything on the red flag or warning.
No, not at all. So what's happening with South Road Bridge and. No, not at all. So what's happening with South Road Bridge and the Main Street Bridge down by Laughing Brook is the two outermost beams are in somewhat of a decline. And the good, well, and the good thing about both of those bridges, the two outermost, it's one and eight on, beams one and eight on South Road and beams one and 10 on Main Street, they're kind of redundant. They're off the travel way. So if it came down to it, which it's not, we could take those beams out of, out of service. I mean, well, if you, you'll notice that there are some barrels there on Main Street and some horses up on South Road. That's essentially just to keep people away from those outermost beams, but they're, they're well off the travel lane, if you will. Right, yes. So that's what I know about Main Street is.
They can't just replace the beams?
They, they can. You can, I mean, you can always rehab a, I mean, not always, but in most cases, and certainly in case, and I'm not an expert on, or an engineer when it comes to, to bridge rehabs or replacements, but I would think so, John. I would think that you, that you could, you know, check the decking out, kind of give it a rehab instead of a replacement.
I know back on the Summers Road, either Summers or South or Chapin Road, we did actually put some extra plates in just to strengthen it.
Sure.
It seemed like that would be the type of thing you could do here by welding extra plates to the side and extending the decks if you wanted to.
Sure. I mean, even.
And tendency just to throw a new bridge at it seems a little overkill. I know maybe it's part of the mitigation as well. They'll take care of the, the potential flooding thing by perhaps changing the box culvert size or.
That part of the other plan that they came up with were low-impact work upstream to absorb some of the rainwater before it comes down and causes flooding. But if we get this grant, we will go forward with design. And at that point, you can decide, do we, we can go to the tip because replacing the bridge is going to be expensive, maybe $4 million. And so we could put it on the tip program and it would be paid for by the federal government. Or with a design in hand, you can decide, is this something we want to fix rather than replace?
All right. Now, you and I talked earlier or later last week, how many total bridges and culverts do we have in town?
Can we have that number?
We have, we have eight large bridges, two small bridges. We have three box culverts and two major culverts. Major culvert. The major culverts that we have in town currently are asphalt, asphalt coated metal pipe. So, the one down on Main Street, just past the old, the Fisher Residence, that's a major culvert, about, I think, six feet at least in diameter. So you're talking a pretty big, pretty big pipe.
Is that what we had to take, when we did the water project, we had to like take the mole underneath?
Yeah, yeah, that one.
Okay, right. How about, how would the Mill, yeah, Mill Road be classified? Not the, not the one further down with the solar, one up by the quick curve before Evergreen?
That one.
I assume the one in Genevieve is a major one, but then you have the one, you know, at the Wainer's House that has the jog there.
Yeah. I'm drawing, I'm not, I don't have that on here.
Hey, we found another one.
For, yeah, for some reason.
So just to get a sense and ask, Mark, you know, you know, we have, people see these major ones here and they don't realize there's quite a few, I don't want to say hidden ones, but you're driving down a road at 30, well, it's not where you don't realize you've gone by this little culvert, this little, whatever you will, drain pipe that, you know, crossing the road. And the highway department, all four or five of them are responsible for keeping all this, you know, up the snuff, just like the catch basins. I think Don's mentioned before, the impact this has on our stormwater requirements as well, you know, keeping the flow. And I know, Don, in your neighborhood, we've talked before about different easements. You have the famous mini mandalini one, right? Sure. You know, and a lot of, and how the drainage has changed over the year, that property behind you, which was always repository, if you will, for the street drainage, you know, still is, thanks. But.
Be nice if we could do that again. It would be.
You got that new excavator and a dark knight?
Yeah. It's, that, that area, that whole area is so flat, that water, we just had to replace a catch basin top on Fernwood. And there's actually standing water in, in the two catch basins because.
Well, that was the whole thing.
That needs to drain.
Like there's no pitch going back to the back, right?
And that goes all the way through into Wilbraham, through crosses, under sessions.
Because it's so silted, there's no storage here anymore. But that's, like we talked about, that's the problem with the scantick further down.
Oh.
When the water gets to the kids, swings up, but I know.
Yeah.
Still have the shrinks in, huh? Sure, right.
Yeah, aside, aside from these major culverts, I mean, there's dozens and dozens of smaller culverts, you know, 12 inch to 15 or 18 inch that, yeah, that just, you know, carry the water under any given roadway.
Well, look at the fact of North Road at the bottom next to my parents' house. It got down to Ballard's at the end. And that's just really pretty much probably a three, four foot corrugated pipe, just right there, you know, going from one side to the other.
That's it.
Yeah. And you've probably got dozens of those.
Absolutely. And then we've got outfalls, all the outfalls in town, which I, I tried to count today on the map, on the map that I had provided. There's roughly 130 outfalls townwide.
And is that all part of the MS4, depending on where they are, Don? Probably, you know?
Yeah, there's probably a few dozen alone in our permitted zone for the, that the MS4s covers. So, those are all, you know, routinely inspected annually, cleaned out, jetted out. We'll have, you know, if, if there's an issue, even with the culverts.
Has that happened yet? I know we saw that the account hadn't been spent down yet for.
I'm in the process of, yes, doing the cleaning.
Snow and ice. We talked before, the balance wasn't bad. You had talked potentially getting a couple loads of salt to cap off. Did that happen?
So I did make some calls and was unsuccessful in getting any inside information on, on where the experts think the, the prices might be going on, on salt. So, so no, it didn't. But if I can order a few loads, I could probably squeeze a few loads in. The only concern that, that was brought to my attention is a lot of these companies, they use private haulers who, this time of year, there'll be full swing into construction. So I can call and, and see if I can get a delivery.
80% full, 90% full?
Oh, I'd say 75. I mean, I'm not, yeah. I'm more than half, for sure.
All right.
But I'll call.
Yeah, if you got a good price on it, you know.
I'll see if they have trucks available to make deliveries. They should, I mean, they should because the contract is in, in effect. So they'd have to, if I really needed some, they'd have to find somebody.
Okay. By the way, nice job by your team in getting the, the town ready for the Memorial Day.
Oh, thank you.
Festivities at the townhouse. The grounds look very good.
Thanks.
What's, what's the status for the tree? Are you guys getting it after July 1st? Is that it?
Yeah, that'll be nice.
A little Charlie Brown one just starting in the ground?
With a new star.
I think it's what, 10 foot?
Tiny, tiny star.
I think so, 8, 10, 12.
Great.
Right over the old septic.
Oh, so it grows quickly? Okay, great. So, Mark, anything else? Need a couple more dump trucks, anything, new garage, new shed?
No, we're doing well. We're doing well with space. And we're busy backing berm, trimming roadside brush. The roadside tractor's been out trimming as well. We've got areas flagged for, we've got areas flagged for the mulch, you know, the mulching head for the excavator, digging ditches, cleaning out ditches. I mean, we've got, we've got a million things going on.
What about the drainage at the park that you're supposed to work on?
So.
Did that never get done by third base?
No, it never, well, the drainage works.
I heard that. Remember you said that before.
So it's working. I mean, I, I just hate to, you know, what happened was is somebody had plugged, well, and I don't, I think I said this in a previous meeting, I blamed it on some kids or whatever, but it was plugged with rocks, like stacked rocks and, and whatever. And once, as soon as we pulled that debris out of there, I mean, that thing flowed like crazy. It flowed constantly for a few days easy. And it was just, and it dried up, it dried out that whole area.
And your intent was to do the work, obviously in August, the driest, you know, time of the year, but.
Right.
I guess some assessment would be, does this not need to be done and we release the allocated funds?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I'd, I'd hate to say, no, it doesn't. And then something happens. I mean, I have the pipe, I have the pipe.
Yeah, but you could use pipe in other projects too. I'm sure it's the same type of pipe you would use.
This would be the perforated pipe with stone. And it's now finally pretty easy to, to come by.
Okay.
Yeah. That was the, that was the major hangup with that was getting that pipe delivered. That took close to a year.
Do you want to coordinate with parks then?
I can.
If they want to make sure, you know, how they sit with that area over there?
I will, yeah, absolutely.
Just to clean that project up would be good. Heard from some residents up at Hampton Heights, they were quite pleased to see some markings being done up there.
Yes.
There was a message today from the Mass DOT that you're going to get any remaining RAP funds that you haven't expended in as a lump sum. Do you have anything left?
No, we spent that right down to the penny. Which, you know, and they made up, and they, and for the communities that participated, well, probably all, all the communities in, in Massachusetts and followed the, the rules and conditions, had, you know, a fair amount of paperwork and, and other things to do for this project and reimbursement. And, and they said, no, if, if you don't spend it, you're going to lose it July 30th, June 30th. And now they're coming out and saying, no, we'll just send you the check and you can go ahead. And I, I was like, so, I mean, but no, we did, we spent every penny on, on that. That was main, the section of Main Street down here and some line painting.
So quickly, again, Chapter 90, which was in the roughly 250 range.
Correct.
And then the talk from the state and Don, you probably read MMA, that there was going to be a supplemental on, and right now they can't even get the first bond together, let alone any extra talk. So, and they've kind of changed the rules, as you said before, and how you do Chapter 90 expenditures, if you will.
Every year.
You don't need to go into it, but again, every time you talk, a different story.
It is. You know, and it seems to be getting later and later in the year that, that we're getting the notification, that they're either voting on, on these bills or that we're getting notification of what our allotment is. So, I'd say pre-COVID, we were getting a letter in the, in the mail, what, February?
Well, I think, I think we got that letter. The problem is they haven't funded it. So yeah, you're going to get this once the legislature funds the thing, you know, we vote, because we voted a number of town meetings.
Well, at least it was something, it was, you know, a number that, that we could prepare our bids for and, and, and start our, our project request paperwork for Chapter 90. I feel like now, you know, it's, it's kind of dragging on, we're getting later and later. And, and one thing I was at some point, and, and I just want to, you know, say this real quick, is, you know, at some point I might look to kind of change my operation a little bit as far as the bidding goes. And in other words, let the state handle their business and have a lot of money, let them put it in our accounts and everything. Last year, it wasn't until mid to late July that they did that. And perhaps I, I do my bids in late summer, late summer to be done, for the work to be done, either, you know, in the fall or in the spring. Still with a stop date or a completion date of June 30th of the following year.
The town does vote, they are allowed to borrow in anticipation of, so the funding is not, and obviously we have, we were just borrowing from ourselves. The other thing is that, if you recall, Mark came to us with a, if you will, a draft construction list for the year. When we had the talk that there was going to be a supplemental bond issue, I asked Mark, would the extra, I don't know, $90, $100,000 change your mind on a couple of projects? Now that we have no idea if that's going to happen, he'd like to put his the bed so they can go ahead and, you know, get his information with a formal, you know, notice from the board.
Oh, right.
So I'm looking for basically a board endorsement that we took a vote and said, yep, go ahead and pave those roads.
Just the May 3rd thing?
Yes, yeah. Since there's, Don, you see, the legislature is not.
So moved.
All in favor?
All right.
Well, it's just like a journey.
Spread away.
It just helps start the process for the pre-qualification and then the project requests. Stuff like that. So, thank you very much.
Okay, and everyone take a look, Mark did put up a, a flag for us to look at, a three by five similar to other towns. That's on the pole at the exit from the town hall driveway. And take a look and give us our, give your feedback, what you think of it. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Folks, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I sent Bob a note, but probably didn't see it. Mark, may I ask, have you had any status update on the two outfalls or storm drains, the situation we had back three years ago, the new house opposite Cross Road and that big gully it was digging? You were supposed to have some kind of agreement with that new house being built?
So it appears.
On the west side, Ted?
Opposite Bennett Road.
Yes, kind of opposite Bennett Road and Cross Road, the new home. And there was the big gully where it was flowing stormwater debris into the scantick there.
Correct. I have.
East, Eastbrook, excuse me.
Right. So the contractor has pretty much abandoned that agreement that we had. However, I've made tentative plans with the site contractor who was working over there, who was from town, to remedy that issue, Ted.
Okay.
There's still a question as to what's going on with that easement. And there needs to be some research done to figure out, because that easement never came in front of the Board of Selectmen. Okay? That was talked about at a planning board meeting, I believe, and a conservation meeting. But, so it's still unclear whose, whose property that is. And I'm going to say, if it's not the town's property, you know, there should be, I, my opinion is that there should be actions taken to force the builder to make those upgrades. And then the town will accept the easement once they're, once they're made.
But it's consistent with what the town's done in the past. But it's consistent with what the town's done in the past.
Right, uh, you know, so it's just a matter of finding out now. I did have somebody approach me and say that it has been registered in the registry of deeds as an easement. And I, I haven't confirmed that yet, but I'm, I'm planning on looking into that. But, uh, if it is, then there's something, there's some, it, it never, you know, because usually I, I'm pretty sure that something like that, right Pam, has to go through, uh, the Board of Selectmen. So, um, I'm not sure exactly what happened.
Yeah, it's, it's just a concern because it is, um, the stormwater is not being properly handled and it is our storm drains. And at some point the town could become liable for that.
I don't see why it's different than, for instance, the Jay O'Brien situation from a number of years back. Uh, we comfortable with reaching out to Rose to look into recording with easement, et cetera? Making sure the town's interest is protected?
Uh, is that something I'm gonna?
Well, work with Bob on that.
Okay.
Uh, just a note for the board, I got a note from Shelley that the, uh, $300 was given and received. We appreciate the action, uh, by the people who are at the meeting. Hopefully that bodes well for the future. Mark, I want you to go home.
Thank you.
Unless the board has more for him. Great.
Thanks, Mark.
Great, thank you. Have a great night.
Make a call to the podium, the fourth selectman, Mr. John Plaster.
Good evening.
John?
John Plaster, Chairman of the Scantic Valley Water District. I think quick thing we'll do is just give a quick background, backup, uh, background, I should say. The original problem with the landfill leaching chemicals into the water system uh, resulted in a lawsuit. Uh, the town was forced to, uh, supply freshwater, clean drinking water to a number of residents in an area that was designated the Scantic Valley, the original Scantic Valley Water District. There is a pumping station behind the caretaker's house in Laughing Brook. Then came the salt shed issue where they were, uh, attempts, the town made attempts to try to resolve that with a, a separate well system, but that was not working out. They still ended up with salt in the water. So then the American Rescue Plan came to be. And at a town meeting two years ago, I believe, they extended and enlarged the water district to include the area down near the, uh, town garage. At that time, we put in extended water system from the caretaker's house down Main Street. Uh, up short way up on, uh, North Road, we got the firehouse, the townhouse, the, uh, highway garage and some residents along the way. So that was resolved. We finally got that cleared up and working well. Then the, um, then this, uh, thing, uh, PFAS came to be and that, that's, I call it tough lawn because it's basically, it was developed back in the, in the late 40s as a rust representative, prevent, preventative. And it got widely used for everything else. Now it's, it's a forever chemical. I'll never, cannot, doesn't break down, doesn't degrade, it's always going to be there. So testing began and we have homes on Glendale, um, South Munson Cross that have picked up traces of PFAS. Now, state requires us to test every quarter uh, because wherever it's been present, and we're looking at at least $100,000 a year in testing fees. It's very expensive to test for. So then we said, well, let's see if we can extend the existing water system to cover these homes. Well, we're kind of maxing out the capacity of the pump house. So it was determined, and we've been working with Time Bond, determined that we would have to replace the pump house first. We had a, an incident where the, the water system was, um, brought down almost completely when there was a, a problem with running toilets in the townhouse. So it took, we fixed that issue and so we're back and running, we're fine. So we want to extend the system. Well, we had a meeting and with Time Bond again and our wa- water operator and the, and the commission. And we decided the first thing we'd do is replace the pump house. And we thought that was the best way. Now, I don't know what the balance is of the remaining funds in ARPA. Bob, do you know?
Little over half a million.
All right, half a million dollars will cover the pump house.
Quarter, half of it. Half of it.
Half of it.
Pump house upgrade is a million dollars?
Yeah, let me just add on to what John was saying there. Our pump house is 23 years old and our water operator, last couple of years has been saying, you know, at some point, the state DEP is going to start looking to upgrade the hydro pneumatic tanks we have. We have in-ground storage tanks right now and they're all steel. He says they're looking to get away from those units and the DEP is eventually going to require a system upgrade. If we look into resolving the PFAS issue at the homes that are being tested around the landfill, um, it's being suggested that we need to do upgrades at the pump house. Two above-ground storage tanks. I don't remember the capacity offhand, but it would be more than adequate to provide water to the current district plus the additional homes affected by PFAS. Um, just to backtrack again for what John was saying. We were doing yearly testing, but because the state came out with this new PFAS testing requirement, we had low levels of, I think, three homes were tested with low levels of PFAS. But because there was a detection underneath the threshold, um, it triggered off the quarterly testing, which is why it's so expensive now, I guess it's a pretty expensive test. So we reached out to Time Bond, you know, had them come up with a quote to do the engineering and the build out of the system. Um, originally the Board of Selectmen had authorized us to kind of take charge of the water district to kind of do what we got to do. But looking at the numbers we're now seeing from Time Bond, I thought it was important that we bring it back to the Board of Selectmen and say, hey, this is where we're at right now. This is what this project's going to look at.
Is this on the OneDrive? Because I can't find it.
Yeah, it's on the OneDrive under projects, Scenic Valley Water District Expansion. We, we put it on there last week. So all in all, you know, engineering fees alone for the, the complete build out, which is the pump house build out and the extension, there's a site map survey, is geological permitting, you know, all the, all the engineering costs is $174,000, which is far greater than we are anticipating. Um, you know, they're, they're throwing out some rough numbers based on the previous extension, the cost for the pump house, the cost for the actual infrastructure. Time Bond's recommending to do it in two phases because it's going to be two contractors. Um, you know, you have a water operator to do the, install the, the system and then you have a construction operator to do the build out of the pump house. Um, he's estimating that, you know, each one of those is going to be substantially greater than we anticipated. Um, with contingencies, all in all, we're looking, this could end up being $2 million. So, long story short.
The state, the state actually did a, did a survey last year. Their own sanitary survey they did, and they reviewed the pump house and such, and they did, again, make the recommendation that that pressure tank be replaced. So they don't last forever.
Right.
There's a chance that half of that cost can be paid without, uh, involving the local taxpayers. But, um, there's another maybe potential million if it goes to 2 million. Where, uh, it would make the most sense to use the state revolving fund, which has been in existence for 30 or 40 years. Uh, you borrow the money at a very low rate of interest. You pay it back, the fund gets bigger and you can borrow without reference to, uh, banking banks or, or the current interest rates.
Lot of bonding.
For maybe a million dollars and then if you want to take the remaining ARPA funds, maybe 500,000. And we have a grant proposal for a half a million.
Well, look at the, my question was looking at the difference from the last project and trying to get a sense of, how do we add 3,000 feet of piping and service for $600,000? And we're adding 300,000 of feet again for 2 million. And I think as Craig said, because we're doing so much more.
Right.
You know, you look at the breakdown, I'm guessing here this is saying it's roughly 630 for the pumping part, for the piping part. The extra half million for the pump house, which is needed, like you said.
There's two contingency fees on there though.
The contingency part, I think, is probably, might be a little hefty.
It is.
Look at what we did last time, you know, we dipped into it, but only because we took a couple alternates. We picked up a couple valves, stuff like that. The engineering part, that's, maybe we bit it out, maybe that's a little hefty too. I mean, we want to do it right. Here's the thing, we are dealing with DEP. The last thing we want to do is make a mistake and come back and they're like, whoa, we're going to modify your consent order and now you have to do this. The other part in my mind, we might be missing here, and I think we talked about it briefly. Where does Audubon stand on this whole thing? And go back to look for the agreement. I know we've had trouble trying to find the original agreement.
John found something.
You did find something?
I found the original agreement and we almost have free access to eight, uh, eight acres of land there, but that's just figuratively speaking, because we have.
Well, we want a good relationship. We want to make sure we bring them into the loop and, you know, again, I like your board. I mean, you're the custodians of the pump house. You should reach out to them and.
Right, and that, that would all be done through engineering. They, they, they have the original agreement and.
Right, but I mean, I still think you as representative of town.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we would definitely touch base and say, is what's going on, for sure.
Not sending men in black, you know, knock on their door. No. So, I think due diligence, when you break it down like that, it makes more sense. Okay, we're doing the same expansion, 3,000 feet for pretty much the same price.
Yes.
But there's also the infrastructure of the pump house that needs to be upgraded. Yeah. And then engineering, which still seems like a pretty hefty price on top of what we paid for engineering last time.
Yeah, and I, we did ask Time Bond about the, the cost of that and it just incorporated with a lot of the DEP requirements and stuff that's going to be on their end, they said. Is that how I remember seeing it here again?
Probably not wrong about that. I mean, now with the buzzword being PFAS, I'm sure there's a lot of stuff there for that.
Right.
So.
And just for record, you did mention, I heard you say something about, you know, well, maybe shop and engineering. We did put a kind of a, a rough bid out there. Bob sent it out to different firms and everybody's declined us, except for Time Bond.
Like Fosnoneal and all those guys?
Sure.
Well, I have no problem. I mean, they know our stuff. Heck, they closed the landfill originally 20 something years ago, so.
I guess we were starting to see bigger numbers than we anticipated, so we were uncomfortable saying, hey, yeah, let's go ahead and sign off on the engineering study, not knowing if, you know, I, where's it going to go?
The one thing is, and I think you made this point before, we, we want to do this carefully and since we got funding for the testing next year, it's now like, oh my gosh, we have to get this done in September. We can get it done, we can go the year with our testing number and get it done right. If Bob and you find a different grant program or something like that, that only helps us. I'm not sure if borrowing from the state, perhaps they can't pay their bills now, you know, so that's a great thing.
What's, what's, so what's the first step going to be?
The engineering study. And that's the 174 number.
Then we authorize that out of ARPA.
Out of ARPA.
I think that's a wise thing to do.
And then Bob also applied for the one-stop grant for 500,000.
So put that towards construction cost, basically.
Whenever we would see that, so we're probably looking next year.
The important point there is that that one-stop program is not going to be releasing decisions until the end of the summer.
This summer.
This summer. So. Once you started with engineering, we're going to have to use ARPA funds.
Right.
But, and that won't go bad. The answer, I mean, what you get is going to be good.
Yeah.
I'd entertain a motion from either of you.
Uh, so moved to use ARPA funds for to begin the engineering study for the expansion of the Scantic Valley Water District.
To alleviate the PFAS.
PFAS.
Right, and that'll be, and keep John as the lead man on that.
Yeah, is John, are we going to authorize John to sign the, the, um, proposal from Time Bond?
I would say no, just because he's not an elective official. I think Bob should sign that, yeah. Sorry, John. Otherwise you'd be responsible to pay the bill if I don't want that.
I didn't, I forgot that part.
You have a second?
I have a second, yeah.
All in favor? Look at that money.
Thanks, John. All right, so Bob, you'll have that proposal, you'll have to sign that for us.
Thank you for being on top of that.
Thanks, John.
Paul is on the loop, yeah.
And of course you got Bob working, my flag working. Yep, that's right, working. All right, uh, shared agent.
Well, I said, I gave you a copy. It's nothing new there. It's something we have been reviewing with other communities for a while.
Can you find one farther away? Maybe there's somebody up by, uh, Lawrence or something? Anybody up by Lawrence you want to look for? Pittsburgh?
The Granby Board of Selectmen are voting tonight on the agreement. We vote tonight, that will allow us to get started at least in the process of hiring, which I think is going to be challenging.
And this is paid for by?
It'll be challenging. We, we will rearrange some funds.
Inside our current budget?
Yes, inside the current budget.
Oh, okay.
In discussions with the Conservation Commission. Granby wants 20 hours right off the top.
So you want this, basically we vote the MOU contingent on Granby voting it also, basically?
Oh, yes.
Get moving on this anyhow.
So we're closer now than we've ever been with other committees.
Bobby had us at hello.
We got to get this closed.
There's only 350 towns after that. We can. And you served in seven of them. You've got to be able to find one of your former people.
Served in all but seven.
All right, uh, can I have the Town Ministerial Report now, please?
Okay. Since I had the conversation with you, I have added, uh, some items at the bottom. Uh, John is recommending, I don't think you have, but can you bring the, bring the revised one that I revised this afternoon? I, I just added a.
I got that.
Oh, you got it, okay.
I asked Bob to, uh, start keeping.
Start tracking. Okay, IMA with Granby, you know about, uh, we're updating the Board and Commission Handbook to reflect the, uh, Supreme Court case involving behavior at, at public meetings. I'm going to go over that with Board and Commission members once we get it squared away. You know, that we've received, uh, good news from the Gambling Commission. They were awarded $203,000 for sidewalk design, but contingent on getting the, um, the money.
Their other money?
In the bond. And today I started putting together email addresses of all the other communities that are in the bond. And try and, we can do a joint effort to appeal to the governor, fund this thing now. So, that'll take some time. I told you I completed the one-stop agreement for the water district. Also another 75,000, uh, for the planning board for the master plan. Not sure we're going to get that since we, you know, they may push back and say, we already gave you 75. And then I completed that template that you have there for decisions involving the three positions.
And the new grant. On the special town meeting articles, actually, the two I've.
Retiree payouts.
No, the purchase and sale for the property that was operated at meetings.
Okay, yeah.
What's the EVIP grant?
Evil, evil grant.
EV card.
Huh?
They've said to us, you're approved.
For what?
They didn't give me a figure on money. I just, I saw that email later this afternoon, so I'm going to be back to them. But put in a charging station.
Is that the one we put at the senior center we talked about?
Well, we have to make it, I mean, the board has to make a decision where to go. One of the questions I think that's going to come up is, uh.
All you need to do is send me 10,000 to ensure.
Four ports, you're going to replace some parking spaces.
Yeah.
And if they do an expansion over there, we have to make sure that it's going to be adequate parking for the expanded facility. for the expanded facility.
I think also CPA might be looking for a couple of articles in the fall as well, I know typically, we don't, but time constraints might lead them to that, so, that was on there as well.
I also checked out retiree payouts. The Advisory Committee estimated and included those.
That's what I thought, I asked them to do that.
That's why I'm brought this morning, do we have those covered? Okay, good.
I went across this top thing out, I just left it there.
Just to make sure we had enough in the.
Yeah.
Pam's walking away like she won a Wheel of Fortune, I mean, jeez.
Well, and then the last item there is that the emergency notification system cost came in today. Jane brought it in, about a thousand bucks more than we have in our budget. So, we're going to have to move some money, well, this is what happened. They were bought out, and they're consolidating with another company, and the first thing the company did was jack the price. So, I mean, I often.
To pay for the buyout.
It's fairly cynical, I was thinking to myself.
There's your parachute.
Do we want to, we want to, we haven't paid them anything.
Oh, can't be flipping back every year.
But, I mean, yeah, but that's, it's a nuisance to do that.
So, but this is the bill for the current year, so we're actually, when we pay the bill for the year, we're starting July first, we're going to be short in that account?
Correct. Can we just get a quote from them, too?
Yeah, we did, just came in today.
No, no, I thought we had a quote before we appropriated the money in the account. Before we went to town meeting, I thought we had a quote.
Oh, I see, okay. I think so, yes, I think so. That's right, I think that's going to be the squeeze. Feeling the generator out of that account.
If anybody hears, anybody hears any noise in the background, they're having auditions for one floor of the Cuckoo's Nest downstairs, so, you may hear some screaming, it's not necessarily our board, yet.
That's the report.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any selectman news?
I also gave you copies, excuse me.
Selectman news, planning.
Of the, of the document management.
I had a quote from somebody else.
Peter Fisher.
Okay. What's up with strategic planning?
It's coming, we're meeting tomorrow night, five-thirty, we're meeting with the Special Education Parents Advisory, PTO chairpersons, and the school council people. It's the same type of presentation, these are the, what we've looked at options, see what they have to say.
And where's that going to be?
It's going to be at the IRC.
Nice.
Which I always refer to as the library administrative.
Library, library.
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 Yep. All right.
I got a septic hauling permit for earth mover excavation to operate in town.
Are they good people?
They're paying the whole septic, you want them to come and get your stuff?
Did they pay the fee?
They paid the fee.
I make a motion to approve their license.
Who is it?
Earth movers excavation from Wolverham.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is on you, you brought this forward. No idea where that is, Millbrook Circle?
Meadowbrook or Meadow?
Millbrook, Millbrook Circle.
Old occupation.
Yeah. That truck marked outside, nice. Okay, I did also, go ahead. I think we already took care of them.
Well, didn't we have a bunch of one-day permits for the VFW?
Yeah.
Oh, you had them last week?
Yeah, last week.
Did you do anything with them?
No.
No.
I don't know. Okay. With the board's permission, I'm going to reach out to Wolverham and suggest that we meet with their board, like we did a couple of years ago, Don, and just, you were on Zoom, I think.
I was on Zoom. I was at the.
Lake George, right, or something?
I don't know, Lake Champlain.
Oh, somewhere, your summer house.
My summer house.
Yeah, and since they have a change, I think it'd be nice to, during the summer, touch base with them.
Okay.
All right. And as I heard, perhaps we might get into a summer schedule, and we could do that maybe on one of our off weeks in July or August. Quick trip over.
Something on our summer.
Sure.
Yeah.
How does the board feel about the summer schedule? In the past, we've officially taken the position that in July and August, we're every other week. We've also taken the position, we're going to schedule every week, and then, based on the agenda, just go ahead and push everything.
I like the every other week schedule for the summer, if something goes up, we can always schedule, right?
If we have a need, we can do a special meeting.
We can do a special.
So, then, we'll start that in July?
Yeah, July and, oh, July and August.
So, right now, our first meeting would be July third, which with the long weekend, I would just say, okay, our first meeting will be the tenth.
Yeah.
Tenth, twenty-fourth, and then seventh and twenty-first.
Works.
That's it, the summer's over already.
Yeah, we're already there, back to school.
And then put the weight away, because it'd be Labor Day, Don, at that point, right? Yeah.
They still do that?
Oh, you kids. No idea what I'm talking about.
No. Although, we won't be done the fourth either, because it's Labor Day.
That's why I said we're not going to meet on the third.
No, no, Labor Day, not July.
Oh, Labor, so.
According to the calendar here, since Labor Day is July.
Okay, now we're down to the topic of staffing in the town hall.
I did that template for you, listing the decisions that will be needed.
Where's that template?
Uh, it's right here.
Never got that either.
Oh, yeah.
Saw a copy over here, I grabbed, is there one in the folder, too?
I also sent it to me.
John stole it from me.
I probably did, but, because I didn't get one.
Where are we on the Board of Health Coordinator, posting, interviewing, position, hiring?
That one, you mean?
Firing?
You mean fire?
No, fire, I mean, fire, 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 fire. Fire.
Tomorrow and Wednesday, they are on the front burner, all the new jobs.
Oh, but, have we posted it already, the fire clerk person?
We're going to be posting, posting this week.
I made a point to Bob today, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm guessing here, but I think that type of job would be attractive to somebody in town, maybe who would stay at home right now, but, we're talking. Fifteen hours a week, and I'm sure they're pretty flexible in the schedule, where it could be during a school time or something like that, you probably have people that have good office. Microsoft Office skills and whatever, that would be eager for that, something like that, I did say to Bob, should we get that notice out, I think, we'll pack it. Do you think, I mean, that would be, you know, people who have a child and, you know.
That'd have to go out very soon, because.
School is.
There's only two weeks left.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but if he develops that, it might be, it's, because we talked before about how are we getting a message across to all targets, if you will? We talked about the scribe weld, I'm not sure anybody under fifty-five reasons.
It's another posting spot, so sure, why not, why not utilize it?
Post away.
Do you think, does the school have good social media presence? Do a lot of parents respond to their Facebook page and stuff, or?
Well, I don't think the school department itself uses Facebook.
No, but you know what I mean.
But the PTO, the PTO does do stuff on social media, Facebook, they post events, so, PTO got involved, you could probably send something through them. Digital backpack, I mean, it's hit or miss, I mean, sometimes parents don't even read those emails coming in.
Right.
The principal's newsletter, so, it's going to be hit or miss anyway, but, you know, at least it's another avenue to get.
It's more, it's more. Okay. Well, I just mentioned, Bob, I think that's an opportunity for getting that position out there, I think it's in a number that would be attractive to some family members, that type of thing. I'm sure the fire department could be flexible in terms of, or it's going to be nine to three every day, or nine, twelve every day or whichever.
That one is front burner this week, and also, if we get approval from Granby, we're going to get an ad together for that as well.
We should also start looking into replacing Pam, too, because we're going on summer schedule, every other week, we have what, six meetings until September?
Yeah. That's why I did this decisions here, that, you know, the options that you have, if you want to keep the office organization as is, then we should start in with a replacement of Pam. Uh, yeah, replacement of Pam, and not wait too long for replacement of Jane.
Before we start talking about replacement of individuals, I think we need to go back and figure out our operations that we've talked about here, you know, hours, days, and whatnot. I think we need to come to a set conclusion of where we're going with that, and then, now we start looking into filling the positions based on that schedule.
I know that I made. I would like to see the illustration of five-day office, Bob did bring this up at the last staff meeting, how the message got out, but other departments weren't interested in it. But, we weren't talking about.
We weren't talking, I, so.
So, but, Pam has also made a point, that she feels that the marketplace would get wanted to enter for the.
I think so.
Notice that.
I think, so I got some ideas on that, some thoughts, and I've been thinking a lot about that, and I think by having a Friday availability, people are already used to not being open on Friday, I think, if anything, any type of schedule change, it'd be more beneficial to have a late evening as opposed to an additional day. I think we can fill a position easier Monday through Thursday, and everybody slurs the Fridays off. Another thought about that, and it's completely irrelevant to anything else, but just my thinking is, there's a lot of talk about mental health and mental awareness, and, you know, maybe we set the precedent, you know, okay, we'll do a Monday through Thursday type deal, because we're focused on our employees' health and our employees' well-being, and we're giving them that three-day weekend.
I see one problem, actually, that's what we do now.
Right, that's what we do now, so there's no difference, but, you know.
For the three offices.
I don't, I don't see a need to go to Fridays, if we can meet that need with maybe a late evening. So, this dovetails into another thought I had, you know, are we hard-pressed to have our meetings on Mondays? Now, would it be benef, would it be beneficial to us to allow, if we're off on Fridays, Monday is now the building block day, you know, the town administrator, the administrative assistant can get caught back up and be ready for our meetings, and could we possibly go to Tuesdays? And if, in that Tuesdays, maybe we make Tuesday the late day, where the administrative assistant comes in at ten or eleven, and they stay until just before our meeting for any type of, you know, people off the street looking for stuff coming in, looking for paperwork.
Which we do now, just give you the.
Well, we really don't do it now, though, I mean, it's not really written stone.
Well, it is, I mean, she's here a permanent six, but nobody knows it, so, yeah.
My point, exactly.
So, I'll give you the history on that, we used to, when I started on the board back in oh-five, we were meeting Tuesday nights, and that was something Jim Smith wanted. And then he moved it to Monday, because the paper complained that they couldn't get it in the paper for that week. And so, whenever a story from Hampton had to be written, people weren't seeing it for a week and a half. And that was the problem with going forward, if you will, the deadline for the weekly thing being Tuesday meant that we weren't basically topical for the following week, so.
I don't think we should rotate our schedule around what's convenient for the paper, if it makes more sense to operate our department that way, I think that should be looked at first.
End it that way, Craig, I think we were saying that that's, are we giving short shrift to the people in town by not giving them current information, if they have to wait a week and a half to find out what's happening in the office? That was, that was the consideration of the board.
I get it, you know, but, you know, there's.
We make a decision, they don't read about it for ten days. So, I understand your point.
I don't necessarily agree with that decision by the paper, but, you know, what am I going to do about that?
No, no, there's an opening. Kristen's on the call right now, what do you think, Kristen, could we have a Tuesday meeting and still make the deadline to get into the time? Yeah, she's still on or not?
I just recorded.
I can't tell, I can't get back to my thing here. Craig, help me.
Nope, it's not there.
Okay, great, well, something to look into, I mean, it's a good thought, Craig, and I think it would, it would address sometimes that rush to get all the paperwork together and stuff like that. Probably better off to meet Monday and Tuesday every week. All right, so.
I mean, there are towns that stay open till seven, start the Selectmen meeting at seven.
Well, started, that was the start of our meeting.
Right.
And we were finishing at eleven.
But that.
And as the board changed, people were like, oh, heck no.
Well, they argued that when towns were mostly doing five days a week, and so, those towns would close at noon on Friday and offset it by staying in at seven o'clock, hoping to be more convenient for the public to come after the workday and meet with the Building Department or assessors or whatever.
Well.
I think most found that people don't actually come after the workday, that, and if you're going to extend the day for department heads, I think there's going to be some issues there, based on what we heard at the last staff meeting.
You know, I think, you know, if we looked at who was attending the meeting, you know, we have Bob here, Laura's now running the computer. If we had to say the AA was going to have late hours and stay in the office, no, that could be, or, stay here, somebody shows up, I have a question, okay, just zip downstairs and take care of it, but we have late hours. But ninety percent of the time, ninety percent of the time, they're still going to be at the meeting, because this might happen once a month. But we posted late hours, and we've addressed it, yeah, you have the opportunity. So, that's something to think about, I still would like to hear, I am concerned about the timing of this, getting things out in the paper. So, I'd still like to hear from Dalton or Kristen about that.
Well, we've been discussing this for a few meetings.
Not the change of, not the change of meeting night, no.
We haven't had input from the public, because I know a fair number of people watch these meetings.
Yeah. And they watch the replays, too.
Watch the replay. More watch the replay, I think, than watch the meeting itself.
All right, so let's decide four or five days, let's start with that.
I'm fine with four.
Four? There you go, we got that solved. Oh, you want a motion, motion?
Do we need a motion?
No, no, I thought you were joining, you were done.
No, 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 we don't.
No, I thought we were, it's normal, so.
Well, your first option here is replace the administrative assistant.
So, where are we advertising, do we advertise internal?
Are we, well, first of all, are we going to, are we going to replace the administrative assistant, or are we going to talk about an assistant town administrator?
That's the second option. So, I think it's either one, either way, are we going to reshuffle the jobs and go towards an assistant TA? Or are we going to replace the, actually, the job description that I have as executive assistant?
Yeah, whatever, you know. Let me ask you this, Pamela, about reporting to someone.
Yes.
Do you find it difficult reporting to three selectmen? I mean, do you think you have to specify in the job description that the executive assistant will report to the town administrator?
Only, or?
Only, yeah. I mean, you're, you're, you're used to it, but I mean, saying, you know, someone comes in and now I call up and I say, oh, can you do this letter, that letter, or John calls up, or this, or Greg calls up, or should it be, you just, we go to the town administrator and say, look, I need this letter done, or could you check this out, blah, blah, blah? And then he could assign it to the executive assistant or to somebody else. I mean, I, I, my, see, my vision. I mean, I, I, my, s- s- see, my vision of the selectmen is that we're the policy body, right? And everyone else is the implementation people. So if we say our policy is we're going to, you know, hire an engineer for, you know, the, uh, the water, then the town administrator or what else takes care of that? And I don't, I don't worry about how they get it done. I just assume they get it done. And then we also, I guess we're the oversight body. When it's not done, then we can complain about it. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not in the, as you notice, I'm rarely in the town, rarely in town hall.
Rarely.
Rarely. And, uh, because I'm not, I don't believe it's my role to be, see what everyone's doing. I just assume they're doing it.
And it, it, I.
So I guess my question is, is it difficult for you to?
No, you know, I've worked for the board for so long, so this is relatively new.
So I guess what I'm asking is, should, should, should the, should the, uh, job description say the executive assistant supervised by, or reports to the town administrator?
Yeah, I, I don't think it really matters, do you?
I think what happens, you know, if I was the town manager, two staffers reported directly to me and supposedly not to the selectmen. But in practice.
Yeah, the selectmen are on the phone all the time, right.
Would say to the administrator, can you?
Right.
And so, I mean, that's the way it happens.
Yeah, okay.
Despite whatever formal rules you have.
I think it's also the aspect.
Say, I need this, I want this, can you do this?
I don't think that was the definition though, when the administrator was, position was started. And you can go back to maybe Carol Fitzgerald in her committee, that the reporting for the added AA was to both the board and the town.
Yeah, and I'm asking, is that, is that a difficult position or does it complicate matters?
I think it would complicate matters if the administrative or executive assistant didn't also report to the selectmen as well as the town administrator because then you could start pulling aspects and say, oh, well, I only report to the town administrator. So whatever you tell him to do is what I can do. So then it kind of undermines the authority of the board of selectmen at that point.
The selectmen set the culture regardless of what charter says or the law says, or the bylaws says.
Danger is not getting the same instructions coming back down. That's the danger.
That's the thing. Yeah, I guess that's what I'm.
Making sure we're all coordinated. I mean, to me, the biggest thing, biggest best thing is having the OneDrive, so we're all referencing the same documents, not going back in an email, oh, I have this version, that version, whatever.
I guess, I guess, I guess what I was trying to get to is that.
Well, you know, we're all in the same page all the time. The day, now you talk about an assistant town administrator, we're funded at fifty-five, but part-time. I don't think that's a number that wouldn't attract somebody, you know. We're not, you look at, okay, they just went through in East Lametta, assistant town manager who got the job. But that was a town with a budget, gosh, three times our size?
Well, yeah, I think, I think it was like sixty-something million.
Yeah, yeah.
Sixty-six, sixty-six point five million, I think it was.
So, I mean.
Well, you saw the number from the combined jobs of administrative, executive assistant and health coordinator. I mean, you've got money to shuffle around if you choose to do that.
Well, we can't decide the budget year, I mean, we, right now.
If we, if we say, okay, we're going to, uh, do option two and, or, what's your, your option here? Option three? What's option three?
Option three is to.
No, for, for hiring, where's the assistant town administrator?
Option two. Option two is more involved.
Yeah, okay.
You have option two C you've just decided.
Right. So, so, so I guess what I'm saying is, would, would it be possible to hire an ass- assistant town administrator with no town administrator, full-time town administrator? Would the person say, I don't know who the town administrator is gonna be? Or if we hire an assistant town administrator, are we setting that person to be, oh, this is gonna be the town administrator? And maybe we find out we really don't want that person to be the town administrator?
My question is, what does the assistant town administrator do that the admin assistant doesn't?
Probably very little.
Right. I mean, it's all about, to me.
Very little difference.
Task definition in job description is critical.
Yes.
So, I think admin assistant, and you could have that tool to say, oh, this person is in the wings waiting to move up.
That's the one, that's the only argument that I can see for doing that. What Pam has done historically and even up to now is essentially what an assistant town administrator would do. The only difference would be if you hire an assistant, you're gonna have somebody with at least initial training to become your administrator when.
Well, I'm saying, are you really diminishing the pool by saying, okay, and, and let's go, ATA is gonna require a degree in public administration?
Yes.
You're gonna bring your pool down to here, you know, so quickly. And for the difference in functionality, is it worth it?
Do you think if we posted a job as an assistant town administrator, we're gonna be taking the pool based on?
Based on his recommendation for they need a degree in BA?
Yeah.
Which I think he had a payback now, I think, I don't think he's not there for that, but still, are you gonna get? And if they went to that, do they want the ATA job or they're going for TA?
Is the town gonna support an assistant TA and a TA?
Basically, you're relabeling the AA to ATA.
And I don't see the, I, I don't see the reason to do it. If the person who comes to this position rises to the occasion, then you say, oh, looks like this is gonna work, and you find someone else to take this.
The only argument is the assistant would, you hire an assistant as a stepping stone. If you're not doing it for that purpose, the work that is currently done by, by Pam's office, basically the same work that an assistant would be doing. So.
I mean, I, I understand that concept. I, I think it'd be a great stepping stone. And as we talked about previously, you know, shadow Bob and then groom them for that position.
Right.
Are we, to Pam's point, is it a funding difference? I mean, will that difference in funding for an assistant administrator make up for, that we've never used the full amount for Bob at the moment? Would that check into that, fill that void there? Or would it be more expensive on the tax, tax base?
And with the other offices, that way, we were just thinking today of activities that Jane is involved with that are not part of the job description. She is our de facto facilities manager.
Let's, let's not jump ahead just yet. I agree with what you're saying. I, I wanna get there too, but.
And she runs the transfer station, you know.
So, first thing, taking first person out the door. Do we want to stay with the option where, okay, we have an AA? We're going to make sure the job description of the AA is de facto assistant town administrator, basically. Coordinated meetings every day, understanding the backup role going forward, which has really stepped up more in the, recently. I like coming down here and you and Pam are meeting together. Let's discuss what's on for the day. This is what I've got going, whatever. The TA goes out, the AA knows where all, it's all the bodies are buried, and can keep going. We don't bury bodies, no. All the grants are buried, excuse me. Um, but I think to Craig's point there, you can't keep kicking it down the road. Who is gonna be?
Who, who does the, who does the, the real personnel stuff, though?
Yeah, it's still somewhat.
Disparate, right?
Divided. Some boards insist they do the hiring. I've gone back and forth with a few of them, but, um.
Yeah, but, but, but I guess that's my point. I guess, I guess my, my point, th- they may think they do the hiring, right? And they may even do the hiring, but I'm not so sure that they keep track of vacation time, sick time, comp time, e- even if the person's in the office, right? And, you know, and then Pam does a lot of the insurance, does all the insurance work and all that stuff. And so do we need to consolidate that under one roof to make sure that, that happens? You know, because even in Jane's thing, I saw that, that she takes care of jo- job injuries. Well, why?
She does?
Yeah, it says in her thing.
No, she doesn't.
You know, so is that only for the firefighters or who takes care of the police guys when they're injured and, you know, I mean?
It's all insurance. It all comes to my office.
So, and.
Eventually, I think you.
I mean, I know, even, even, I know, even some of the.
Colide authority by way of the town.
I, I would see with some of the smaller towns, even smaller than us, have human resources people. They're, they may be only in twenty hours a week or fifteen hours a week.
That one time, like, uh, we were going to either.
Shared.
Do a shared thing with Islamata or Wolverham at one point, but then their part got so big.
Yeah, they're so big, yeah.
I think to Don's point there, the hiring part, I have no problem with board like planning or whatever. They hire their clerk, they know what job needs to be. But then the management of it, like you said, goes to the central department. We've had that question before. Who's monitoring vacation time? That's why we changed the handbook that everybody's on the same calendar. Because before it was like, oh, it was the hire date. It was impossible to track because you had twenty-seven different dates. And so most, just quickly, most payroll companies will monitor that for you. I know it comes on my paycheck.
I've talked about it.
Yeah, you still, you know.
Et cetera.
I thought we were gonna do that.
You have four, sick time and stuff.
We had a, I worked at the grocery store, we had a full-time payroll person, that's all.
No, but I mean, to me, it prints on my slip.
It does, but it's just a person, just getting payroll, it's gotta, okay, check from this box, move it into this box.
Yeah, but see, I'm, the question, that, I'm, the question I'm asking is, if Sally in department X goes on vacation for a day or two days, or calls in sick or anything, is anyone recording that Sally was sick that day or, or that?
Well, the time slips, they turn in, yes.
Yeah, well, we don't, we don't know that, we don't.
Signed off by the chair.
Technically is supposed to do that.
And do they?
Well, I always used to do it for Judy when I was chair of Park and Rec. And Charlie took over, you know, when he was.
So you used to do, I'm wondering if everyone else.
I'm pretty sure that you see Carrie Joseph come in and she signs off on Kristen's stuff on a weekly basis. Most chairs do. I'm sure that Bob Makeut signs off on the assessor stuff.
And then where does that, this is, this is getting off track there, but, but then where does that get recorded? I mean, she may sign off that she was out sick, but is there a central place where it says?
She has five days left or so many.
Four days, yeah, right.
Well, again, I don't.
It's not been tracked.
It doesn't show on my slip. I don't know about anybody else who gets a.
I mean, I don't know.
I mean, highway, Mark tracks his people.
Mark tracks, yes.
The PD tracks their people.
Only got eight hours left.
We just write it in.
You and I, our checks from the town don't show that, but I don't know about, we could ask them. You know, does it?
We, we, we don't get benefits like that.
I know, I'm saying, my check at work, I can look on the side, I have this many vacation days left and this many sick time. So there should be a record back.
Talked to Dick about this payroll.
Uh, Dick transmits the information or whoever transmits payroll, it's printed on the slips you pick up from paychecks or check writers, whatever.
So should, should our payroll company be doing this for us or should we have a HR person be doing this?
Well, it's the payroll information transmitted to the payroll company.
It is. And they can do that, and then oftentimes the company will have some software that each individual employee can have access to. Only the individual employee goes and can check out, how many personal days have I taken, how many vacation days?
So, I, so I guess, we got off track here, but that, that's the whole thing, that the human resource thing is, if it's the administrative assistant or the town administrator, it's got, we gotta find a place, a real place for that. Yeah, yeah, town, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it should be under the town administrator unless you had a assistant town administrator.
Right.
So that goes back to our sample level.
All right, are we, let's try, let's try and get one thing done here. Are we going for an ATA or an AA with a good definition that they're doing casually, just implicitly the ATA as well? But we don't have the hosted meeting and degree in public administration.
I, I would, I would, yes. I would go, I would, I would go with the AA, find.
Pseudo ATA.
Pseudo ATA.
Yeah, because I don't think, I think we'd limit our.
I think we limit, I do, I know, I think we limit our pool.
Right.
I can give you an updated job description for that on Monday, and then it'll, it'll go out right away after that. Because, you know, we, we do have some activities that go on that are not in the job description or AA. By the way, the, the, uh, job description that we have for this position that we got from the study says executive assistant. Do you wanna make it AA? Do you wanna make it executive assistant?
It's gonna be the same thing, I just.
It's the same thing, but I mean.
Which sounds more appealing, right?
The title, the title right now, even though we, we don't acknowledge it, uh, when we accepted those job descriptions, that's, that's the title we accepted.
Yeah, I have to say though, just off the top of my head, if I had an executive assistant, it would be to this role, not to that, because I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, when I was in the attorney general's office, I, I did too. She's only responsible to me.
Right, so I think, like I say, we funded an AA position, let's not throw too much chatter up there. I think, uh.
They also had a legal counsel assigned to me too. I don't understand why, but they.
How about the state police drove it back and forth?
I did have a state police trooper, yes.
Shortest one?
And a Boston police officer too.
So you're suggesting leaving it as administrative assistant instead of executive assistant?
Uh, yeah, because I mean, we already funded the. Rename it and for what purpose?
How does that affect the Collins study when it labels stuff through A grades and A rates and, oh, that definition's not here.
Changed to an executive assistant.
That's what Bob's suggesting it says, yeah.
So there's no definition for administrative assistant?
There is.
Oh, okay, great.
You said it was titled executive.
It is the same job description, it's just at the top, when they, when they gave it back to us, because I looked at it recently, it says executive assistant.
Okay, so it was a typo on their part?
Yeah. So.
So we've decided two things. Four days, AA.
All right, so work on that.
Do we task, do we task AA with HR tasks?
Out there for the fire assistant.
So in the job description, the AA is gonna be tasked with HR functions?
That makes, that makes sense to me.
I mean, you're doing insurance already, right, so.
But my understanding is that, you know, Jane hands out some of the new hire information.
Yeah, it's gotta go to one place.
And I have the jackets in the drawer. Uh, I have the quarries in the drawer. Uh, but it is a little bit fragmented.
So you gotta get it all in one place. You gotta get the jacket, you gotta get the open meeting law, you gotta get all that stuff, all the insurance, all the duh, 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 duh. A welcome, a welcome packet.
Basically, yeah, yeah.
And digitize it and make it available for people who lose the packet and wanna look at it six months.
Who does all the HR at the police station? We talk about, you know.
I mean, don't you and Kathy coordinate insurance and stuff still too, right?
Oh, I, I mean, I, I will ask for Kathy's help if they're not responding to something, but typically I just send the stuff out and they.
Vacation or whatever.
Right.
Like I said, due for the insurance questions, like they've done, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry, so we knocked that off, so we're done with the AA, so we'll talk about, uh, health next week. And fair, where's wrong with the fire clerk as well, right? Okay. And really talk about, is there an opportunity to get the, if you will, the job description, the need for the fire clerk out to a broader audience? And I think we might find people that are, that are interested in it.
Hiring through the MMA for a position like that is, is a non-starter.
No.
It needs to be something that we hire locally.
I can put something on the front board. I drive by and read it all the time.
He's proud of you.
My eyes are never on.
I know we talked about, we said we'll do the health quarter next week, but I was gonna plant the seed that I had mentioned in the past, that I'd like to see health coordinator, health coordinator be tied in with emergency management.
Fine, good, good. That's fine, good, good.
Be tied in with emergency management.
Yeah, I agree, we talked about it last year, and we even heard from the chief that he wasn't crazy about being it because he wants the.
Emergency management director or the management director?
The emergency management director.
It, I understand, but we heard from the chief that they need to focus on their specific responsibility, and they can't be distracted from that, the fire chief.
I agree with that, but I, I think it's a matter of authority, and you're, if you put a civilian on the fire ground or in another emergency situation, they have, I've seen it a lot, they will have great difficulty.
Asserting authority.
Of uniformed people, put it that way.
Yeah, but are they in charge of or coordinating all different departments together?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're a central, you know, all the information goes through them, so say a natural disaster, you know, we don't want to pull the police chief into the emergency management role because now he's no longer acting chief.
Right.
So we need somebody there to act as the liaison between, what, facilitations, the MAs, you know.
The only way, the only way you would keep the chief, I would think, is if you had a lieutenant spot, and then you would have somebody, maybe make the lieutenant, whatever. But, you know, we talked about that before, because we saw that happen in, was it Wolverham, Andy's Lametta both added a lieutenant spot, and Scotty's talked about in the past, but you don't have a, you don't have a subordinate second person, except for the senior sergeant in the fire, in the chief, you know, in the police department, so.
Certainly having a person who is trained in dealing with the press, because if you have a real emergency, press comes at you, and you don't, if you're trying to manage the crisis, you are the chief of police or the fire chief or the town administrator or.
You need that central person.
You're trying to manage the crisis, and you don't have time, and they, they swarm around, I mean, they, they, they all want their own statements.
Right.
You call a press conference, that's not what they're looking for, they want, they want a unique story from you.
Well, we need somebody who's at every meeting and has a sense of everything that goes on to be that press officer.
We do.
But, just on the side topic, the side topic of emergency management, you know, just thought of it now, maybe we should set up our emergency managing council to come in to one of our meetings, just so we can talk about summer functions and stuff like that, and getting ready for the fall.
Well, I've been making.
We've never had a meeting unless there's an emergency or.
Well, I've been making a point in the past that it seems like we're a little behind the eight ball when sometimes we call that group together, either I'm sending a message out, hey, the tornado schedule will come tomorrow, or should we meet, you know, so I think it's, it's almost like it should be defined as you're meeting quarterly and proactively, like you said before, I think last year we talked about it during, you know, they're going to be responding, Blizzard was supposed to.
For instance, Jane and I last year went through the border health trailer, just looking through, you know, all our emergency supplies and whatnot, you know, but having the emergency team together, knowing what we have on hand, you know, what's utilized it, but now we're going down another tangent.
No, it's fine, I mean.
We should get everybody together.
No, let's put that on the agenda for a time in July, you know, who goes, if Scotty's not here, who's calling MIMA? Who's talking to him? You know, where's the back, who has that phone number? I mean, I used to know it was Bruce, I don't know if he's there anymore.
No, he's not.
Right, there you go, thanks, Pam, thanks.
He's tired.
All right, Kirk, from.
What was your journey?
No, if you have more, Craig, fine, bring it on.
Well, since you asked. I'm hungry.
All in favor? All right, thank you all.